Good evening. I'd like to call the order of the City Council meeting for March 18th. Vice President Hussein. All right, I'm sorry. Clerk Swope, will you please call the roll?
Good morning.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Pelavonaglu.
Present.
Councilmember Spadafor.
Present.
There are eight members present at Quorum. And we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Does anyone from council have anyone they'd like to be remembered at this time? All right, seeing none. All right, we will rise for a moment of meditation followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are to special ceremonies and presentations. We have a tribute in recognition of the Cesar E. Chavez Memorial Observance.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pelavonaglu.
Thank you, I'm gonna go.
All right. If anybody from the community would like to come down to be part of this tribute for Cesar Chavez, please do so now.
Please come down, come down. Good. Hello? Yeah, please, please come on down. Please bear with me, this is the first tribute I've read here at council. Resolved by the City Council of the City of Lansing, whereas Cesar Chavez was born on March 31st, 1927, in the North Gillo River Valley in Arizona on the small family farm his grandfather homesteaded. Cesar Chavez's father lost the farm during the Great Depression, forcing the family to join some 30,000 farmworkers who followed the crops throughout California and lived in tents and makeshift housing that often lacked a bathroom, electricity, or running water. He was 10 years old when his work began in the fields and was forced to leave school after the eighth grade to help support his family. And whereas, for more than three decades, Cesar Chavez led the first successful farmworkers union in American history, achieving dignity, respect, fair wages, medical coverage, and pension benefits. His motto in life, "Cese puede, it can be done," embodies the uncommon and individual like invaluable legacy he left for the world's benefit. And be it resolved, the City of Lansing, be it resolved, the Lansing City Council encourages the residents of Lansing to attend the 15th Annual Cesar E. Chavez Memorial Observance. Being of service is not enough, you must be a servant of the people. When you do, you can demand their commitment to you in return, held on Thursday, March 28th, 2024, at 12 noon. And with that, I move the resolution.
We have a proper motion in place. Any questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. All right, motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you. Would you like to say a few words? Congratulations.
I'd like to thank everybody that's here and everybody that's supporting this. It's because of you that we are who we are and what we do. Well, I thank you. Thank you.
So I'd like to join with the City Council. We also have done a proclamation showing that we are partners, that we are all celebratory of Cesar Chavez. You know, "Cese puede," it's something that we say often. I don't say a lot of Spanish, but Guillermo's been teaching me a little bit over the years. But thank you all for all that you do. We know this is so important to our community. You know, we know that Cesar Chavez was here. This isn't just, you know, someone we celebrate, but someone who was here, who has spent time here. I did not have a chance to meet him, but I know many of you did, and going back many years, so this is, this is touching to us here in Lansing. So I want to congratulate you all and thank you all. Thank you, Councilwoman, Mr. President. I know that, that we all have to stand together, so thank you so much. I'm gonna present our proclamation, I'm not gonna read it, but I get to read the end, which is, "Now therefore, I, Andy Shore, Mayor of the City of Lansing, by the power vested me, do hereby proclaim March 31st, 2024, as Cesar E. Chavez Day in Lansing, and I encourage all residents to take a moment to reflect upon the great leadership of Cesar E. Chavez and to learn from his example." Thank you.
Thank you. Give this to one of you.
I just wanna take a moment to introduce those that are here, that have been supporters of the Chavez Commission, Committees, and Chavez Movement. Mr. Zain Benavides, with Cafe Cito Caliente, that's a calendar, what do you call it, Zain?
Listing.
Listing of businesses. That's a lot of that. Go to cafacito caliente dot org, and you'll see the, the many things he's got there regarding the Latino community. Natalia Reyes, she's the Vice Chair of Lead of Greater Lansing. Gina Salas and Al, great supporters, business people in the Lansing area. We have Rudi and Elva Reyes, always, always there to support the community. And of course, we have Maria Starr, who is Vancor, who is the chapter president of LAKLA, which is a voter registration, nonpartisan organization. So if you haven't registered to vote, check her out, she'll register you in just one second. So thank you very much, Council, Mayor, for this proclamations and resolutions. We appreciate it, and again, we invite you to this same council chamber for the 28th, March 28th, which is a Thursday at noon. We'll have a celebration. When we think about Chavez, it's a celebration of life, celebration of the many good things he did, and obviously, we wanna continue that. So come and have a good time on the 28th at noon. Thank you very much. Madam Councilman, thank you.
All right, we are to, comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
All right, councilmembers, anyone have comments? Vice President Hussein.
Sure. So the first is that any stakeholder in the Churchill Downs Neighborhood Year, Churchill Downs Community Association meeting is tomorrow, March 19th at 6:30 PM, at the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center, and of course, that's at 5825 Wise Road, so again, that starts at 6:30 PM tomorrow. The Luton Rich Neighborhood Association for the month of March has actually canceled their monthly meeting. Their next meeting will be April 18th, 7:00 PM, at the Mayflower Church, which is at 2901 West Mount Hope. I want to remind folks that the SWAG Spring Cleanup, this is the Southwest Action Group's annual cleanup, that that is fast approaching. The event really has grown significantly over the years, includes a number of initiatives, and really, the scope of, you know, this year's event is, I think, dictated upon how many people actually sign up, so I'm highly encouraging folks to, to sign up. The event will be April 6th at 10:00 AM. We will meet near Pleasant Grove and Homes, and if you are interested, you can email our development specialist, who is Paul Anderson, at paul@joinswag.org. And then lastly, our next Southwest Lansing Constituent Contact meeting will take place on April 13th at 10:00 AM, that's at the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center, and as referenced earlier, that's at 5825 Wise Road. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice President Hussein. Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. I just wanna announce for the neighborhood, there's a meeting coming up regarding the proposed changes to Martin Luther King Street Configuration just north of Union Missionary Baptist Church, all the way north until Ionia Street. The city is proposing during the CSO project to convert that from how they have the Boulevard Medians into two-way, four, five lanes with the turn lane, but no medians. It is supposed to create extra green space on the side, and there's a meeting for that coming up this Thursday, March 21st, at Union Missionary Baptist Church, from 5:00 to 7:00 o'clock. The presentation will start at 5:45. Andy Patrick will be there presenting. Again, this is a follow-up meeting, a second meeting, so anybody who's interested in that, come out on Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00 at Union Missionary Baptist Church. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. So March, this March, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services is making a push to become a foster parent, so if anyone has considered or is thinking about becoming a foster parent, you can call 855-MISH-KIDS for more information, or you can grab some cool SWAG like I have, with the number right on it, or you can check out mi.gov/MDHHHS for more information. We've got a lot of children that need a good home in this state, so everyone can help with us. Secondly, Eastside Neighborhood Organization, ENO, will be hosting a cleanup, March 23rd, from 9:00 to noon. It's gonna be cleaning up the areas of Homer and Howard on each side of 127, which collects debris throughout the year. I hear the council member will be bringing really good breakfast food. We are going to meet over at Sellers and Homer, it's the Laundromat and the Qdoba, so if anyone is interested in helping us, we're gonna need some, some big-time help this year. It's pretty, pretty bad, and that's from 9:00 to noon. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cost. Any additional comments from colleagues here on council?
All right, seeing none, I just got one. I just wanted to encourage everybody that's able to attend the March 28th event for Cesar Chavez here at council. It's from 12:00 to noon, 12:00 noon to 1:00 PM, and the keynote speaker will be Judge Flores. I unfortunately will not be here, I'll be celebrating my dad's 70th birthday out of town, but it's always a great event, and hopefully, we get a good support at this time too as well. So thank you. And with that, city clerk.
Thank you, President Garza. Just since we will not have another council meeting for a couple of weeks, the ballots will be being mailed out on March 28th for the May special election to elect the Charter Commission for the city. There are also, some of our neighboring school districts that do have some Lansing voters will be having proposals, so if you live in Waverly, Holt, or East Lansing schools, you'll see an additional proposal on your ballot. Remember, we have transitioned to many folks being on an automatic ballot list or a permanent ballot list, so there's about 17,000 of you that the ballot, you don't have to do anything at all, it's just gonna show up in your mailbox, so watch for that to show up. Got some feedback. About the 30th or 31st or right around then, right around the end of March for that election, and there are, again, 36 candidates for nine positions, so you've got some studying to do. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the audience who has a community event to announce, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details.
At North Cemetery, which is at 845 East Miller Road, on Saturday, April 13th, from 9:00 AM to noon, the Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries will be hosting a workshop which will teach the basics of cemetery survey methodology and documentation using Michigan Historic Cemetery's Preservation Guide as our reference. Practical application of basic mapping techniques, photography, and headstone documentation will be taught. So if any of those are of an interest to you, you're welcome to join us, there's no cost for the materials, it's open to the first 15 registered participants, and we hope for good weather. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community event announcements?
Thank you, Councilmember Cost, for the announcement of our Saturday Cleanup. We could also use community service, so if there's a fraternity that would like to do some community service, send them my way. We had our ENO Super this past Saturday, and I want to thank everybody that participated, all of our businesses, the donations, our servers. We had Brian Jeffries, the mayor was there, Monica Zahusky, and Trinny was there, and as we always do, we did a vote for the best server, and I'm here to give it to Ms. Trinny.
All right, seeing none, we are to registration for public comment on legislative matters. Legislative matters tonight includes items 2 through 9 on the agenda, so if you haven't had a chance to sign in on a blue sheet, we will give you about another half a minute to jump up and get signed in, and with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shore.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna talk quick, 'cause I wanna go through the, you want me to do the budget introduction now also, correct?
Sure.
Okay. First, a few comments. First, I want to thank everybody that came or watched the State of the City. We have a lot going on in Lansing, and if you missed it, please check it out on the city's YouTube station. I wanted to thank the ENO and congratulate them on the Super. I know Councilwoman Pelavonaglu and Councilman Cost, who was there helping set up, appreciate that. It was a lot of fun, it was great to do that again. I want to congratulate the Unitarian Universalist Church on their 175th anniversary, which was cool to be part of. I would like to remind everybody, there's, there's one more, one more fish fry at Cristo Rey. This, this coming Friday is the last fish fry, so if you're, if you haven't been there, try and stop by. I want to congratulate Sparrow Bloom on their grand opening downtown. I want to remind everybody that the Crosstown Showdown is coming up next week, so go nuts. And then the week after will be opening day, so everyone show up and let's support our lug nuts. And then our small trash pickup requests continue to be available, so any neighborhoods that want to do small trash pickup, as you heard, ENO is doing one, SWAG is doing one, neighborhoods can get items, pickers, and bags, and things like that, from our Department of Neighborhoods and Arts and Citizen Engagement, so please check that out. I want to congratulate Scott Keefe, who, if you haven't seen, will be leaving us. He has taken a job in Charleston, South Carolina. He is our LEPA director, but will be leaving us in about a month, and I want to make sure that councilmembers know, I've had a chance to tell leadership and no one else, that Jim Smirka will be retiring. So we'll be working through transition over the next few weeks, and I will be putting Greg Venker in as interim city attorney. So Greg is sitting up here at the table with us, learning, and we're excited to have, to have Greg join us, and we certainly thank Jim for his many years of service to this city twice. So when you see him, congratulate Jim. He's gonna, he's gonna stay on for a bit, helping us out, making sure that, that things go smoothly, but we have every confidence in Greg, and, and I, I'm excited. So congratulations, Greg. Now I'll get into the budget. You have in front of you two things. You have a budget resolution, and you have a transmittal letter with some of the highlights. You will have the official budget book probably later tonight. I think Jake is in our office working on finalizing that, as well as the line-by-lines. You'll have that tonight or tomorrow, first thing, somewhere around there. Council leadership was gracious in allowing us to drop this stuff on Monday, knowing that we had to push a week earlier, but we knew we were gonna get it in by your deadline, so I appreciate that, Council President and Vice President. Just some quick highlights, because there's a lot in here, and I'm excited for council to go through it. It's a $165.1 million general fund budget, $297.3 million total budget. Our property tax revenue is up 6.5%, but our income tax revenues have been relatively flat, and we saw a 2.5 increase in revenue sharing. We had a lot of asks that we were navigating from council, from our own departments. As council had asked, we were adding one more staffer for the LEDC, but we're able to do that using grants, so even better, that we don't have to take that from our general fund. We're putting $700,000 into sidewalks, and I know council had requested, I believe, somewhere around there, 500, somewhere around there. We're putting $9.7 million into capital improvements to our major streets. We have added two more firefighters. We are putting $300,000 into advanced peace for another year, plus we're getting grant money for a lot of that work. We're increasing our neighborhood grants from $80,000 to $100,000. As, as I mentioned in the State of the City, we're proposing, should the state legislature pass the public safety revenue sharing, which would be continual additional dollars that cities like us get from the, the state sales tax, with that, we'd get about $3.5 million new a year, only for public safety reasons, so I'm proposing 15 new police officers, along with dollars for advanced peace, to, to be pushing that forward with violence interrupters, a real-time crime center analyst, so these are things that we are proposing, hoping that that will pass as the budget moves through. For Councilman Jackson, in addition to our new, our two new, our two staff for sustainability, I don't know that we've announced this yet, so I guess I'll say it here. Lansing was selected for a Bloomberg American Sustainable Cities Grant, and we will receive a Bloomberg Philanthropies-funded innovation team, which is up to, which is gonna be three dedicated staff for climate mitigation and promoting equitable outcomes, so we're actually getting three staff without having to, to put it into the budget, so that's exciting. You asked for one more, I'm giving you three more, but we did it through a grant, which is gonna be great for our city. We included the $800,000 warming center dollars from the state to be appropriated, and Kim Coleman will come during her presentation with, with our plans for, for that. She continues to work that up and will until she presents. Our pension and OPEB obligation is $55.4 million, which is stable and not going up, and that's a good thing. We're saving about $500,000 per year due to the 11.5 million we received from the state. We put that right in, and we, we save it on arbitrage. We are putting $50,000 in for the stadium, in addition to the $230,000 in stadium debt service payment. We're doing $175,000 for facade improvement. I know Councilman Hussein has mentioned that recently, and we certainly are looking forward to that. We put $145,000 in for the library, the South Lansing Library, which I know both our South Lansing councilpeople are big supporters of. We are adding a new staffer at our EDMP for housing, but it's not going to be just CDBG. Most of our housing staff is just CDBG, so it can only focus on those parts of the city, so we're gonna take some money from general fund, so that way, we have someone that can do housing throughout the city, whether it's CDBG areas or not. We are adding two new accountants, and we're removing the finance deputy director, so taking away a deputy director and putting in accountants, which will be almost even, I think it's about $20,000 net cost. We're funding a firefighter cadet program, which is similar to what LPD has, is a request to the firefighters, and, and I do think that's really important for us, especially as hard as it is to get firefighters these days, training our own through cadet programs. We have proposed to do that. We're adding a dispute resolution and training staff person in HR. We're adding an arborist. I've gotten that every year, and this is the first year we're able to put in an arborist. We know that, that we're short. I know Irene Cahill is out there somewhere, happy that she's getting a little more help, assuming it passes. And then we're adding two more solid waste operators for our cart system. So this is all in the, in the budget book that you have. Our budget is balanced. I think we have a 13% reserve still. We are not taking any money from reserve, so I'm excited. I'm excited for this budget. I'm excited for council to review and go through and talk to our department directors. Again, you'll have the full budget book tonight, and then the line-by-lines, and I think you all start in a few weeks, so that's our, our top line of the budget, and we present it to you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Shore.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters, and as I indicated, that's items 2 through 9 on the printed agenda. Item 2 is a public hearing, adding Chapter 887, Property Tax Exemption and Payment in Lieu of Taxes for Workforce Housing Projects.
Just, just very quickly, we had Mr. Raleigh Van Fossen from Economic Development and Planning, and when we actually introduced him and set the public hearing for this, and he did a fantastic job, so I'm just gonna very quickly talk about some of the highlights from that presentation. We did learn that December of 2022, the state legislature made changes to the pilot statute to allow municipalities to opt-in to workforce pilots. The main difference between the traditional pilot, which stands for Payment in Lieu of Taxes, and workforce pilots are really the type of projects that are eligible. It was explained to us that traditional pilots require some sort of federal aid or a li-tex subsidy for low-income housing, targeting populations at 60 to 80% of AMI or below, but that the new pilot type wouldn't have that aid requirement, projects that are targeting up to 120% of the AMI could actually apply for the bait. We do, as a legislative body, have to opt-in. There would be, so this is one of the differences, there would be no 10% by right pilot, as with traditional pilots, the mayor's office can move forward administratively, so all requests would actually come through this body. Also, there would be an application fee attached to this type of pilot. The application fee piece will actually come by way of a separate resolution that is being worked on now by OCA and administration, and still think that is being worked on, so that should be forthcoming. It was also mentioned that one potential applicant has approached the city about this tool, turning around a property on the south side of the city that has fallen into disrepair, and marketing to those making up to 120% of AMI. We did ask the question if, because it's relatively new, if other municipalities had opted in. I believe Travis City was referenced, maybe one or two other municipalities.
Thank you.
All right, our first speaker is Jody Washington, followed by Mitch Rice.
Thank you, Jody Washington, Lansing. About the pilot, I would hope that all of you would vote no on a pilot. The majority of our revenue comes from property taxes and income tax, and pilots never help our city in any way, and until our regional partners start getting involved in workforce housing, low-income housing, affordable housing, I don't think it should be put on our shoulders to carry all of the weight for this type of housing. So I would ask you, Mayor, to start reaching out to our regional partners and ask them to take advantage of these, whatever it is they want to call it, because we have enough pilots in our city, we need the revenue, and we cannot continue to sustain all of the lower-income housing in this region. They certainly are taking advantage of putting up the market rate in the higher-rate housing in our regional partners, but they don't want to take on any of this, and in fact, East Lansing just voted down affordable housing. So until we see some cooperation within the region, and we see a stopping of the exclusionary zoning, I think it is incompetent on us to start saying no. And reconsideration of the brownfield, if you don't understand what a brownfield is, and you don't understand what an incredibly important tool this is for our city, I would ask you to please educate yourself on it. This brownfield should be reconsidered, it should be passed. I don't care what, how you feel about the ovation, frankly, I'm in favor of it, and if we're gonna do it, let's do it right. We have to start building up our city and making our city someplace where people want to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mitch Rice, followed by Nicholas Sandy.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers, President Garza, and Vice President Adam Hussein. In reference to item 2, adding the Chapter 887, Property Tax Exemption and Payment in Lieu of Taxes, the pilot program for workforce housing projects, I have one comment about the ordinance. Within the ordinance, under definition, Section K, it reads, "Workforce housing means residential rental units or other housing structures or units that are reasonably affordable to and occupied by a household whose total household income is not greater than 120% of the area medium income for any given year, as most recently published by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development." I'm aware that generally, ordinances do not typically contain narrow definitions that... I'm aware that generally ordinances do not typically contain narrow definitions at times. However, the reasonably affordable is vague. Defining this with a percentage of income that is routinely used for approving a mortgage is better wording. It could read units that are thirty percent of the renter's gross income, or some reasonable percentage. This is a more enforceable and clearer to grant a pilot project. Also, it helps increase rent control in the city and helps citizens understand the availability of these types of housing units. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nicholas Zandi, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
So I don't know if this is an unpopular opinion of mine, but I am just straight up against the idea of selling a parking lot like that, item eight. The thing is, like, people absolutely need to use parking lots so they can park their car somewhere that isn't in the streets, so they don't block traffic. I mean, isn't that common sense? Getting rid of a parking lot like that, I mean, now you're going to have to park your car somewhere in the street, which will probably block traffic and probably cause all sorts of problems. And also, private, sending it to some sort of like a private firm, Boji Group, it's like, you know how I feel about privatization? It's just, if it's public, it should just not be privatized, because privatization is just the wrong thing to do, because when you're looking at the case of a parking lot, just about everyone's going to have to park there at some point, and if you privatize that, and probably, they probably use it for whatever nefarious purpose, there's not going to be much oversight on that front. That's why I feel that parking lots absolutely need to stay public. I mean, the buildings around there can stay private, as far as I'm concerned, but parking lots are something that should be used by the public, and so for this, I hope that you vote against item eight, and yes, also vote against item two, because the way I hear about this, this clearly is something you went into head-on without a plan, and I would argue maybe the same would go for the brownfield thing. So yeah, please consider voting no on certain agenda items, and specifically, don't vote yes on item eight.
Thank you. Next is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Jennifer Estill.
Okay, with the ovation center, I am reminded that Dominic and Jason originally pitched this as a financially sound project, utilizing only the cable TV fees to fund it, and convinced the city council to put the full faith and credit of the city on the line. Since then, periodically, they have come back with what I call, yeah, buts. Yeah, but if we do this. Yeah, but if we do that. Yeah, but if we do something else, it will be golden. We don't want or need, nor can we afford, golden. Bronze will do for now. Silver and gold can come later, if they're ever proven to be needed and financially justifiable. At this point, that is not the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jennifer Estill, followed by Josh Pugh.
Hello again. Quickly, if you build silver, building gold or platinum on top of it costs more. I'm Jen Estill. I'm here on behalf of Downtown Lansing, Inc. I work downtown. I'm just going to, I just quickly want to remind people of some of the people who have put their faith in this project already. First of all, we have eight-point-five million dollars in PEG fees that we have judiciously gathered, two million from the State of Michigan Supplemental Appropriation, which means our state legislators believe in us, five million from the MEDC Michigan Strategic Fund Investment, which means our state leaders believe in us, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in a federal grant, over one-point-four million in fundraising, which means our neighbors and our friends and our coworkers believe in us with private funding. I also believe in Downtown Lansing. I also want to remind us that this brownfield plan, for every dollar of city taxes, that's two dollars of other taxes that we're leveraging. So that seems fairly powerful to me. The other little bits I'd like to remind everybody of, in a survey, because this has been surveyed to death over the course of a decade, ninety percent of community survey respondents suggested they need a space like this, and that is research based on, from a company who does this kind of research throughout the country. Seventy percent of people, as surveyed by Lansing five-oh-one, believe more concerts would increase their interest in living and working in the Lansing area, so there is data there. I'd also like to remind people that this project is slated to, again with research backing it, bring twelve-point-five million to the local economy, one-hundred-and-fifty-nine total full-time equivalent jobs, and if you don't vote yes on the brownfield, we can't get the rooftop bar, which means fifty or more or less jobs. So not voting for the brownfield is inhibiting this project's ability to create jobs. And an estimated a hundred-and-ninety attendance per year, and all of those attendants are going to want something. They might pay the city to park, they might go to Sweet Encounters to get a cupcake, they might shop at Nelson Gallery for a Mother's Day present, they might go to Summit Comics and check it out. They'll probably definitely head to Kelly's or someplace like that to have some form of beverage or some fries. They've got pretty good fries. So that ripple effect that I talked about last week, that we will feel downtown, and by nature of we downtown, everyone in the city, and by nature of everyone in the city, everyone in the region will feel that prosperity and that growth. And again, this is not the Lugnuts. The Lugnuts, as much as I love them, I can't wait to go this year. They program sixty-six days a year. This can be programmed twice that, if not three times that. It's a different ballgame, it's not the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Josh Pugh, followed by Kathleen Edgerly.
Thank you for the time tonight, and for all of the careful consideration that you've given to each of the transformative projects for our downtown. I'm here again in support of the Ovation Music and Art Center, and agree with several of my neighbors here tonight, and several significant donors, to the project that the future of this city does not lie in the basic watered-down version of the ovation that a previous council requested. Tonight and for the last several weeks, we have asked you to support the full version of this project, because we are not going to allow our past and present to define our future. The passion and dynamism that this community has are what led us to support Graywall Hall, an incredible, if smaller, new concert hall and event space that has hosted several sold-out shows since opening just a few weeks ago. The optimism and love that we have for this community is what drives our other downtown amenities, like Impression Five and the Lugnuts, which each welcome thousands of Lansing residents as well as visitors from other communities. I appreciate the care that council has broadly showed towards this project since it was announced, but unfortunately, for over two years since that announcement, as this community has discussed the ovation, that discussion has been marked by misinformation and misunderstandings. I'm not going to spend any of my limited time getting into any of that. I'm just going to ask you again, please listen to the diverse group of stakeholders who've lined up behind this project. Listen to your neighbors who live, work, and invest in Downtown Lansing. Believe in Downtown Lansing. Believe in our community's bright future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Kathleen Edgerly, followed by Marcus Martin.
I am here before you again, asking that this council say yes to creativity, to culture in the city of Lansing by voting yes for the ovation, the amended brownfield. I spoke last week about the research, the data, the input from stakeholders across our region and city that demonstrated a need for infill development, added density, amenities, and activating underutilized blocks for our residents. How a year-long market analysis pointed out projects such as the ovation will not only work here, but be successful and sustainable, and how our hard-hit downtown needs this project and others. To continue our road to recovery as we work together, again, to support infill, density, a diverse business mix, and diverse hours of operation for our downtown that include the evening hours and weekends. As Michigan's downtown, the capital city, we should be an example of innovation, good development, and a proud example of what downtowns can and should be. But instead, we're considering settling on basic, as other cities continue to surpass us in vision, economic growth, density, investment, and amenities for the people and places who call our cities home. Basic, when the State of Michigan and our state legislators have elected to award transformative funding for a downtown performance venue that will drive our residents and our visitors from across the region into the downtown, instead of driving them out, we're considering saying no, and never mind, to the type of belief and faith that our state legislators had in what Lansing could do with these state dollars and the additional revenue it could bring back to the city as well. We're considering no, and voting basic, when innovative tools like brownfield funding were created exactly for projects like this. Michigan has been a leader in the redevelopment of brownfield sites. Why would we consider not using all of the tools in our toolbox to make the ovation the best that it should be for our artists, our kids, our local organizations and agencies, our residents? And again, this project is an example of exactly why brownfield funding was created. As a leader of our downtown management agency, whose mission is to strengthen and nurture the culture, health, and sustainability of our downtown district, and as a lifelong Lansing resident, I'm tired of seeing the city settle for status quo. Continuing the status quo has been an action we've seen repeated time and time again, and quite frankly, it has to end. Not using brownfield and all the other investment tools in our toolbox to create the best for Lansing is a disservice for our city and our citizens. I ask that you vote yes for the ovation, as we look towards the future, not just downtown, but the future of our city and the future for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Marcus Martin, followed by Malik Brown.
Councilmen, councilwomen, mayor, president, vice president. I appreciate the work that you do and the community. I know there are a lot of opposing ideas and thoughts. A few things that I thought about when I thought about the ovation and some of the other things last council meeting is, and I'll try and go through them quickly. There are small businesses downtown that are trying to recover from COVID and the removal of all the state workers. We're a little bit behind, because that was our base. Our competition, while Grand Rapids and Detroit seem like that's the destination for people to go to, it's really a lot closer. There's Battle Creek has a nice downtown, Kalamazoo has a nice downtown. Eastwood is growing. There's a rooftop in East Lansing with the whole street that they block off for the summertime. They're going to redo Frandor and add some entertainment and stuff there. There are things really close by that are challenging us, the ability to have something sustainable and something great here to attract people. And then there's those businesses downtown, right down the street, that I have a lot of relationships with, that are struggling, and they're going to be going through a huge project with the street next year, got pushed back a year. They're going to be losing a lot of revenue, and kicking stuff down the curb a little bit is really just going to hurt them more. They might not be able to make it out of, to see some of the prosperous things that are coming. And then lastly, got to get it right the first time. Lansing Shuffle tried to put it together in two different pieces, and they're struggling, because they didn't go big the first time. They waited six months to say, oh, well, maybe we should have done this, and now it's a lot more difficult, and they're losing revenue because they waited to do it right the first time. So again, appreciate all your work that you put in for the community, and the opinions that you have to listen to, and the tough decisions that you need to make, but just wanted to share some perspective. Have a good day.
Thank you. Next we have Malik Brown, followed by Michael Calwitt.
My apologies, but I wasn't going to use an emotional plea to you today. However, you've seen me here for the third time, and I want you to think about that. How often do you not see me actually here in person? This is very important to me. I don't need to recite numbers to you. You all are smarter than me, I expressed that last time, but this is very important. It's so important, I'm going through a separation right now, and this is my parenting time. So instead of being at home, putting them to bed, this is so important, I choose to come here to say, hey, you see the numbers, you see who invested. Some of the numbers that are on the packet, or not on the packet, will not possibly or probably will not invest in the ovation if it's not to its fullest potential. And just like I said last week, Lansing has an opportunity to be magnificent, but it needs to be at its fullest potential, because if you have a situation where you halfway present something, people do not see it fully, and they don't know what the future holds because they cannot see that. I have promoted plenty of events, and until you show it, they can't see it. So if you don't build it, they won't come to it. Do you want to go to the dollar store? Then be quiet. So the importance to me that this is built right the first time, not build into it, not see what happens, not make a shell and have it so that the second floor could be built later, it never happened. You know what I'm talking about. You've all referenced it. It has catch names and pet names, and it was just referenced a minute ago. We need to do it right the first time, because as I understand it, investors like Michigan State University Federal Credit Union will take their three million dollars and go home. That's no good. This can be used, and the more I read about this, the more I know about this, and the more I feel about this, it is so important that it's done right the very first time. And I appreciate your time, I appreciate you responding to my emails, you don't need another email person to be bothering you. I know that. That's why I don't. That's why you don't see me. If you see me on the street, I try not to talk politics, because you get it all the time. That's not my job. You have a job that's hard enough as it is. But please, can we get it right the first time? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Michael Calwittis, followed by Matthew Higgins.
Hi, it's Calwittis. Totally understandable. So I'm a relatively new Lansing resident, and I guess I just kind of want to talk about a couple of the things that I noticed. I used to live across the street from Jackson Field, the Lugnut Stadium, and I noticed that most of the time downtown, like when I would, you know, look out the window at night, there's just not really many people around, but then if there was a Lugnuts game, there were tons of people around, it was a really fun atmosphere, it was like a totally different city. And I would like to see a place like the ovation built, because I want more of that. I think Lansing is a great city, and I really like this place, and I just want to see it do the best it can, and I would like to see the city use all the resources at its disposal to build the ovation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Matthew Higgins, followed by Brent Forsberg.
Hello, City Council. Thank you very, very much for your time. I'm a roommate of Mike. Right now, we live in South Lansing, but like he said, we used to live in the stadium district, and I feel the exact same way that he does. It would make me sad when I was downtown and it was late, not even late, and scratch that, seven PM, eight PM, a weekday, a weekend, didn't matter. Downtown is empty. You pass five people walking down the street. Where's the vibrancy? Where's the people? The ovation is going to bring people to this city. Everyone I've talked to, I'm twenty-three years old, I just graduated from Michigan State, and I chose to move to Lansing, and everybody I've talked to has expressed an insane amount of interest in this. It's going to bring vibrancy. Like Mike said, during Lugnuts games was my favorite time to live in Lansing. There were people everywhere, the crowds, the noise, all the people going into the businesses. It felt like a place, it felt like a real place that you wanted to be. And if ovation can do that, right for downtown- And if Ovation can do that right for downtown, not just the stadium district, any time of year, why would we not support that fully? It's extremely important to me that this project gets built the way that it needs to be. I know that a half-hearted facility is not a place that people want to be. It needs to be a world-class facility to attract world-class talent. Please vote yes on item nine. Please do a favor to everybody in my age group. Please do a favor to all future Lansing residents. And please vote yes on item nine so we can get the facility that this city deserves. Thank you very much for your time, Council.
Thank you. Next is, oh, and this is the last one before our online speaker. So our online speaker is David Cooper. So we've got Brent Forsberg and then virtual David Cooper.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly tonight, to ask you for your support for the brownfield amendment to help fund the new home of the Lansing Public Media Center and the Performing Arts Center Ovation. As many of you know, the focus of my career is creating great experiences for people in our local communities. Ovation is an embodiment of this ideal. The 500 block still bears the scars of urban renewal policies and fractured this city between Rio Town and downtown. Across the street on Washington from where this project will be is the Lottery Building, which means for another generation, there's no opportunity to reactivate this block. Ovation brings a high-traffic venue that brings unique entertainment experience for the city, but also for our region, bringing people to our downtown to build that vibrancy that we've heard about from previous speakers. Lansing, to me, offers one of the greatest value propositions for living in the country. We have amazing places here. We have amazing job opportunities. We have a lot of opportunity with our trail systems and with the entertainment, restaurant venues, and the people that are here that are so active in our community. This project will help build that story and tell it more across the country of what we are and what we will be as we continue to grow. So again, I thank you all for the opportunity to speak, and I urge you to please support the amendment to this brownfield as it leverages state dollars and county dollars and keeps them here locally and make sure that this project has every opportunity to thrive and continue to help tell the story of what Lansing is now and what it's going to be in the future. Thank you all for your consideration.
All right. Thank you. Are we ready for? We're ready for the virtual David Cooper? While they're... David, can you hear me? Maybe he's not there. David Cooper?
Yes.
Okay, you have three minutes.
My name is David Cooper. I was born and raised in Lansing, Michigan. I'm a professional musician, and I've held the title of principal French horn in some of the top orchestras around the world, such as the Berlin Philharmonic and the National Symphony and the Los Angeles Philharmonic. I've played guest principal horn with other top orchestras like the New York Philharmonic, Philadelphia Orchestra, and London Symphony. Considering myself the opportunities that Lansing has to offer, such as at Michigan State and Grand Ledge High School, even with all the music, one of the things I was able to attract national and international touring acts, I found myself leaving Lansing and traveling to Detroit, or even party activities, activities such as St. Louis Hall or the State Theater to hear any live music.
David, can you speak into the receiver a little better? You're breaking up a little bit.
To find a rock, to go to the city. And also, as a teenager, it was a bit dangerous to drive to Detroit. One thing is a developing sized performance venue that could attract national touring acts. Getting to see live music is not only for entertainment, musician, having it available is how I learned to perform and grow as an artist. The creative ideas and artistry that I was exposed to, you know, they had an absolute impact on my developing musical identity and education. This could be a place to play at, to work towards as a goal to perform at. I know having a dream to perform in a beautiful venue and have a place to, this is what helped me become the musician that I am today. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Okay, I do have some written communications to read into the record as well. We have a letter from the Islamic Society of Greater Lansing in support of item number eight, the sale of city property. A letter from Loews and Finish's Ministry in support of item number eight as well, and a letter from Lansing Common FC, which is football club, in support of item number nine, the brownfield plan. And we are to the referral of the public hearing.
That will go to development and planning.
Okay, then we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Hussein.
All right, on the consent agenda, we have three items. We have the grant application for the Michigan Department of Transportation Local Bridge Program. We have the establishment of a public hearing on the Community Development Black Grant Coronavirus Small Business Support Grant, as well as orders to make safer demolish to the owners of 1326 North Genesee Avenue. And with that, I move the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions or concerns from Council? Councilman Jackson.
I'm not entirely sure, but I believe number six, the person may be here, so I just think it might be nice to take it off the consent agenda for the Make Safer Demolish 1326.
Okay, so you're making a motion to pull item number six?
Yes. Okay. All right, so what I will do is actually amend my earlier motion to include only items four and five, which would be the grant application, as well as the setting of a public hearing on the Community Development Black Grant Small Business Support Grant.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. We already went through the tribute. We have a proper motion in place. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
And that takes us to item six, the Make Safer Demolish.
Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. What we have here is a Make Safer Demolish at 1326 North Genesee Avenue. The listed taxpayer is James Aker. It looks like the SEV on this home is $19,500, and it looks like it was put into red tag 725 of 22. Estimated cost of repairs are $34,065.36. This is a 60-day Make Safer Demolish. It went before the demolition board August 24th, 2023. In the Public Safety Committee, the owner did come, and Mr. Aker had explained to us that he had some difficulty finding someone to demo the house on several occasions. So it sounds like that is the intent with everybody. And there also are no permits pulled. It does say yes for the building, but I believe that it's expired if I remember my notes correctly. I would move for Make Safer Demolish.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions or concerns at this time? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes seven one.
Okay, then we have the budget carryforwards, item seven.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure, we had a pretty fantastic presentation earlier. As part of our committee of the whole, we want to thank Jake Brower, who is our Budget Director slash CSO, our Chief Strategy Officer, for being with us. Essentially, what you have is a resolution for a budget amendment, deal for carryforwards from fiscal year 2022 to 2023, to fiscal year 2023 and 2024. Specifically, this deals with opiate settlement funds. Essentially, they will be distributed evenly among the police, fire, and HRCS departments, each department receiving $122,748 to make up the total of $368,244, you see in the resolution document. Also, in terms of remaining general fund revenue appropriations, the remaining $1,127,710 use of fund balance carry for the general fund breakdown is as follows. $1,127,710 from human services, which is unused fiscal year 23 money, with $920,844 going towards human service agencies operating at $206,866 going towards racial justice operating. Again, detailed breakdown of all those dollars are in the document. We're also shared as part of the committee of the whole presentation. So with that, I would move the resolution.
All right, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions, concerns, comments? Councilman Brown.
Oh, thank you. As I spoke on the committee of the whole, the only concern that I have was with two of the agencies. They indicated Carefree Medical, which is a great organization, as well as Listening Ear, said that their application for 2023, 24 was not received by the original deadline, but they're in need for funding. And it's been several constituent groups who have received funding in the past who are concerned that everybody's not given an opportunity if they don't meet the deadline, and that's the reason there was a deadline. So for that reason, I can't support this, but would be open to a substitute that addressed that in a different way. Thank you so much.
All right, any other questions, comments from Council? Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. I just wanted to briefly reiterate my point from committee of the whole where I noticed for the carryforwards, all the unspent money especially has to do with equity diversity, inclusion, and racial justice and racial equity programs. I've put the exact language away, but basically, it's been a couple of years now that that money hasn't been spent, and it was allocated for reasons, important reasons. So hopefully, in this next year, we can spend it for its purpose. I know there's studies and requests for proposals, but it's been a few years now that that's been in the same status, so hopefully, we can have some action going forward. Thank you.
Okay, any additional comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, motion passes seven one.
Item eight, Act 4, 2023.
Councilman Brown.
Thank you, President Garza. We have Act 4, 2023, for the sale of city property, parking lot one at 425 South Grand Avenue. The group came to the committee in November and discussed with the Lansing Housing Commission and Boji Group that they wanted to acquire this parking lot because of a housing development, affordable housing, that they would be coming for a pilot. It was discussed that the city originally brought the purchase price was $960,000 and was selling it now for, excuse me, $760,000. The reasoning behind the appraisal, they indicated that for fiscal year 18, there was $116,000 in revenue from that lot. To fiscal year 19, $137,000. To now fiscal year 20, 23, only $6,700 of revenue. And so they indicated that there wasn't much productivity, and they were in support of selling it. At the committee, we stated, well, if there is a housing development that wants to purchase it, then there was a need, and that's kind of where that was left. And so. And I move the... Yeah, I move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions or concerns from Council? Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. I am, you know, this is the start of several chess moves for the Lansing Housing Commission to build a pilot development there of low-income housing. And the issue isn't the low-income housing that I have. It's that I went to the 703 single scattered sites that they had. The conditions were deplorable at best that these people were living in, and they sold those properties to a private company because they couldn't handle that anymore, and now they want to build more properties. Logically, that doesn't make any sense to me. And I do not believe that they are good stewards of their properties, and it would be an injustice for me to support this first move of the puzzle pieces here if I gave LHC another chance at housing when I know what the conditions are of the places they currently, they have. Talk to the folks. When water leaking through your ceiling into your light fixture and you can't turn the light on becomes your new normal for multiple years, that's unacceptable, and I can't in good faith even start this process with LHC. So I am going to be voting no on this.
All right. Vice President Hussein.
Just real quick, and this is to the committee. So the resolution reflects that Boji, the Boji Group, on behalf of the LHC, was the only group to submit a purchase proposal, correct? So I guess I'm curious, do you know if we put out a request for proposals for this particular parcel of land?
I'm not aware, but from my understanding, no. Where it was just, I can't remember exactly, so I don't want to misspeak, but it was more like, you know, we're trying to do this, and we want to purchase for that purpose.
I don't love the process, if I'm being honest. The other piece is, I think, you know, when you look at the market for that particular location, and you look at the Ovation, you look at New Vision Lansing, you look at the potential for a new city hall, I think the market for that particular site only grows. And so I don't know why we would want to relinquish the site at this time for something that can actually be done, I think, with existing land in the LHC portfolio. So they actually own a property right across the street as well. So I would be a no vote as well. I just wanted to clarify before I actually took a position. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice President Hussein. Do we have any additional? Councilman Brown.
Thank you. As Rizal and I brought up during committee as well, is if something is now sought after, why would we sell it for less than we originally purchased? So if there was revenue, you know, that was larger in the past and now it's less, well, can we, you know, rent it out to another group or, you know, if there are more housing and people do need, you know, businesses or whoever need parking? So, you know, how do we look at this for the economic growth along down the road as well? So I would agree with Councilman Hussein on that point, and for that reason, I would be voting no as well.
All right, thank you for your comments. Councilwoman Carter.
I guess I just have a question to see if this was discussed. Is there a reason why we were selling for less for this particular property? Councilman Brown? May I address?
Thank you. From the recommendation from the economic development and planning, if I, can I pass this?
Sure. Yeah, and I guess, you know, I was in those meetings previous to, there used to be a building on that property that we tore down, the city of Lansing tore down, I guess.
So basically, we rented it or created revenue, if you see on the document there, from the planning department where it shows the revenues. So they're saying, well, hey, because of COVID and nothing is going on downtown, we'll sell it for less, and we reappraise it, and it's worth less. But of course, we know those conditions, as Councilman Hussein is indicating, are changing based on investment that is taking place. And so my question was during the meeting, or my comment was, if we have a development group who is looking to purchase it, and they indicated in that meeting, I believe Mr. Doug Fleming was there, as well as Boji representative, I think, the president, John Hindu, and they were saying that they do need the parking lot to expand on phase two for their development. Mr. Fleming indicated he would be coming for a pilot, I believe he said, at 4%. And so they want this parking lot. So if we're the city, my statement was, is then that means there is a need, so there should be a negotiation versus, you know, we paid $960,000 and now we've, you know, are selling it for less. And so that was my statement at that time as well.
It looks like we have comments from Mayor Shore.
Okay, so the cost is the appraised cost. It was Boarshead. This was the Boarshead Theater, for those who remember. It was torn down. It's been used as parking, although it has generated zero revenue, not zero, very little revenue, as Councilman stated. But we did an appraisal, and the appraisal is the cost of the property. So this is how much it costs to sell. So that's the answer. The answer is, this was the Boarshead property, and we did an appraisal, and we were told that it would be bought at full price, and we thought that was a pretty good idea.
And I guess I'd just like to add too that, you know, some of my initial concerns were that we're selling it for like $200,000 less, but over the course of were that we're selling it for like $200,000 less, but over the course of years, we've earned, we made that money up through the parking lot. And as you understand, COVID came, we don't get the state workers back, so the revenue's not there like it was in the past. So this is something that the city's trying to partner with the Boji and Lansing Housing Commission. Councilman Spatafor.
Were you all set? I didn't want to interrupt.
Yes, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to point out too, this is going into the parking fund, that's correct? If sold?
I understand.
So it's seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That's a hundred percent plus $10,000 more than what we're spending on parking infrastructure in this current budget, so that is a good win as well for the city. You know, there's a lot of steps between that housing project and today, and offloading an asset like this is, I think, an important part of rightsizing government. I think if we're looking to make this a usable lot again, we're going to invest $100,000 or more in resurfacing that lot. Reports are, it's not in great shape, and I'm not hung up on the $200,000 losses that was over several years and made up foreign revenues. So I just wanted to point out, the, the amount of dollars that generates the parking revenue is a substantial amount.
Mayor Shore.
Sorry, I forgot one thing. This was bid out. We, it had been an ongoing bid. We have a few different parking lots that we have had ongoing bids, and this is one of them. So it had been kind of continually bid out, is my understanding, and we had a proposal come on this. So as soon as we got the proposal, we started the negotiation.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Shore, do you by any chance know when the appraisal, the appraisal was conducted?
Recently. I'd have to, I'd have to ask Shelby, but I believe it was in the last year. She's probably watching, so she might text me. But recently, when we, when we, we get an appraisal, as soon as we start the process, and then we, we get it to you all. We get an appraisal, we negotiate, and in this case, we asked for the full price, and we got the full price. I'd have to get the actual appraisal for a full date, for a date, but recently.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. Thank you. Do we have any additional questions, comments from council? Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. I was trying to make it short. So I was kind of thinking of Councilman Cost's points where this is a first step to something, and the end result, I imagine an end result of a building with pretty much people living in there, calling it their home, whether it's families, individuals, single bedroom, two-bedroom. And it's not like a high-end, I guess, complex, whatever that matters, but at the end of the day, it seems like it's going to be filled with people living there, and I know that we need places for people to live, and I know that there's some push and ask for, to spread people out, which is fine, but if it's not happening, where are people going to live? Like this year, next year, the next year after that? It's already been, the past year, and the previous year, and the previous year before that, a problem, and, you know, we're, we're trying to just figure it out. So this is going to be like two blocks from potentially Ovation. So now we have, you know, some density there as well, so it seems like they almost could go together as far as the whole envisioned plan. So I do like the end result, even though I can't see it, because it's just a, you know, vacant parking lot right now, but I imagine it's going to be housing for people that need it, and that's why I'm likely to support it.
All right. Councilman Brown.
Thank you. And I'm a hundred percent for housing as well, and we had a great dialogue in the committee, and they indicated that their phase one would be able to provide housing, and, you know, that's coming down the steps of Councilman Cost's point. And so for me, voting no is really about the negotiation and the price, and they indicated it won't stop housing whatsoever, and housing, of course, is a very strong passion of mine as well. So thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Brown. And I'll just be brief. I will not be supporting this project. I guess my concerns are, and I don't want to say any disparaging remarks against anybody, I would kind of agree with what my colleague, Councilman Cost, mentioned about them offloading the scatter site houses, weren't able to manage it, but then want to manage a particular project such as, such as this one. And, and not to mention, the last few developments that the Lansing Housing Commission done with federal dollars, it was prevailing waste jobs, all those mechanical contractors came from the Grand Rapids area. So as soon as that money was made here in Lansing, they went right down the street to Grand Rapids to support their community. So I will not be supporting this project. There's a motion on the table. Any other comments, questions, concerns? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, state by saying nay.
Nay.
Okay. Can we get a roll call?
On the resolution? On the resolution, Councilmember Garza.
No.
Councilmember Hussein.
No.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cost.
Nay.
Councilmember Pallavani Glu.
No.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Nay.
Councilmember Carter.
Nay.
There are two yays, six nays. The resolution is not adopted. And that takes us to item nine, Brownfield Plan number seventy-seven.
Councilman Spatafor.
Sure. I move for the reconsideration of Brownfield, Brownfield Plan number seventy-seven, amendment number one. And just to be clear, this is just the reconsideration, not passing the Brownfields. So I move the reconsideration.
Okay. We have a proper motion to move the reconsideration. Do we have any questions, concerns? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right. Motion passed at six.
All right. I would move the Brownfield Plan number seventy-seven, amendment number one, for the five-hundred-block redevelopment project for 501 South Capitol Avenue, 110 West Hillsdale Street, and 520 South Washington Avenue.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional questions, comments, concerns? Councilman Brown, Cost, Jackson?
Thank you, President Garza. I am, you know, like I stated last meeting, a fan of the arts, and have been in the band and multiple other things. And I sent questions I had regarding the Ovation financing, and thank you for the information that has been provided. Some of the question I asked is, you know, who do we currently have under contract to know that we need additional funding? And they, and Mayor Shore indicated that we are still going out to bid. And so for me, it's, I'm not against the Ovation whatsoever, I'm definitely supportive, but at the same time, if we're going for Brownfield for the additional financing, we don't have the exact numbers of the cost for the general contract and the architect and those things. So for me, it's like, why don't we get that information and then, you know, have the opportunity to make a decision for additional funding when we don't have, you know, exact cost currently? And so that's why I'll still be, you know, voting no. Thank you so much.
Okay. Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. I am not going to give a big floor speech again. I still oppose the Brownfield. What I do not oppose, and I think what has been misconstrued over the past week, is that I oppose the Ovation, or somehow the Ovation is not going to happen. This building is absolutely still being built. There was also the misconception that there's not two version of, versions of this building that have been presented, multiple versions, in fact. So I went back to October sixteenth, 2023 Committee of the Whole. We were told that there is a stripped-down bare-bones version, and they're going to continue to fundraise. At that time, they had some nineteen point nine-five million. That was with a million dollars from MSU FCU. But now, it's a three-million-dollar MSU FCU, but that's contingent upon building this bigger version, which would have more lighting, things like that. What we were presented had, had a mezzanine level. In fact, when that was asked during this meeting, the question about the mezzanine, it would just be smaller. There would still be a mezzanine, and they could still move forward, no matter what project was decided upon, whether it's seventeen, I think at the time, it was seventeen point five or eighteen point five. I believe President Wood had asked what the price tag was. She last knew it at twenty, and it was also stated, when Councilperson, former Councilperson Spitzley asked if the project was fully funded, Mr. Cochran replied, yes, it's a hundred percent funded, at the twenty million dollars. So it looks like the deluxe edition was going to be twenty-five point seven million. And if I did a little bit of scratch math, with the two million more from MSU FCU, and the totals that Councilmember Hussein had added up that night, which he was told were correct by Mr. Cochran, we're at twenty-one, nine, fifty. And I, we are so close to that price for twenty-five, I could see us close that gap without having to use a subsidy, because this is people's tax dollars. It is a subsidy, and my concern with this is I've been here long enough to see this song and dance, and I've heard, I've heard it said that, well, this isn't the lug nuts, but we can easily compare this to the convention center we have here in Lansing. We don't make enough money to keep that place going, so we have to subsidize it, some two million dollars. I don't want to see another project end up subsidized. The critical thing that was said during this October sixteenth meeting, when asked about maintenance, five years, ten years, fifteen years down the road, that is all going to be dependent upon revenue. And if there's not revenue from this building, then I don't know how we're going to do the maintenance, but I do. It's going to be a subsidy. I can't put any more burden on taxpayers who have seen a public safety building added to their property tax, a five percent increase last year on property tax. Y'all got your bill this year for another five percent increase. I know I did. We are pricing people out of Lansing. I want to see the, I want to, I want to say, see that I'm wrong. I hope this place succeeds. It would need some five hundred and sixty people a day through the door to get the numbers that they estimate of a hundred and ninety thousand people. It's just quick scratch math. I would love to see that. We are going to build an Ovation. I am simply asking for some moderation. We have always gone all the way with these projects, and they end up a burden on the taxpayers. And, and some of the folks that spoke tonight speak about being lifelong residents of Lansing, but I know for a fact they live in places like Delta Township, Oak Miss. So, you know, if Ovation fails, it doesn't fall on their back, because it's not their property taxes. It falls on the back of the people that are on fixed incomes that live around the corner from me. They have their grandkids living with them, and they don't know how they're going to make it month to month. It's, it's those people that I'm looking out for, the ones that aren't down here, the ones that can't afford two tickets to go to a show at the Ovation. I, I priced out the next show at Graywall. It's nearly eighty dollars for two tickets. That's unattainable for many people. I'm not saying that's going to be the, the price, but it's not going to be free to get in, especially with shows and stuff. And I fear if we do this too big, the burden will also grow, just like when you have a bigger house, the cost of maintenance increases. I would like to see the smaller version of this built, see it succeed. I will eat crow and go from there, and, and then make these adjustments to make it a better version. I think that that is the proper way to approach this, so I'm going to remain a no.
I appreciate your comments, Councilman Cost. Do we have any additional comments from council? Councilwoman Carter, then Pallavani Glu.
Thank you, President Garza. Thank you, Councilman Cost, for bringing up that information from October. I did do some research myself as a newer council member, and it was included that the rooftop or mezzanine was provided in that information at that time. So I guess one of the questions that I had that was not answered based off of Councilman Brown's question was regarding the two-thirds of revenue that would be lost without the Brownfield dollars that was not determined by the communication and the responses. The other piece is that we were able to receive sources and uses document that, to my calculations, and again, I could be wrong, but you already spoke to it, it seems that we do have a surplus in dollars based off of the additional sponsors that were provided and listed. I know it's been mentioned that MSU FCU's increased, but I do not see indication of the other larger sponsors that was listed, nor do I see the pending gift amounts that were listed. So I was just curious to know, within that communication, what those dollar amounts would be as well, to offset what is being asked. So again, not to be confused by my, my conversation just with responses from the, the questions that were being asked. I do want to see an Ovation down here, and I know we will see an Ovation down here. My only concern is just making it make sense. I don't want to over-expand on a budget or on a cost that would later on in the future be detrimental to our city. And although I appreciate the calls, the emails, and the messages, I also received calls, emails, and messages for those who were not in this room, that have not been able to speak, those who are middle and low come, low-income individuals who may not be able to have the grand platinum and gold services. If you look at today's concert prices from our outsideing cities that many of you have referenced, it's a card payment or beyond. So I want to make sure that this is conducive to all of our city residents and not those who have invested interests. So with that, that my reason would be for no.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Pallavani Glu.
Thank you, President Garza. So a few things. So we have been going over this information, you know, for, for weeks, and after last Monday's vote, still, the constituent contact, the stakeholder contact, folks who are experts in this field in terms of promotions, the arts, music, strong regional partners who have reached out to contact us for support, I just, you know, would like to express that I have taken all of those comments and thoughts into consideration, while being open to reviewing more of the information that was put forward over this past week. I know I personally asked additional questions. There were follow-up questions that were asked, and I believe we received responses to those questions. You know, some of my issues that I had last Monday very much were in line with, let's go with the basic version and see where that gets us. So, you know, that being said, you know, asking follow-up questions, apparently, you know, when you're pouring the foundation for a building, you need to know what version of a building you are going to have. So if the foundation doesn't support a larger structure with more amenities, it, I think it goes beyond lighting and sound systems. It speaks to additional rooms for classes, for performances, meeting spaces, and so on. So I don't, it, it, it didn't appear from the follow-up information that I received that we could go with the smaller version and then expect to be able to build on at a later date. Maybe we could have had, you know, the rooftop or a smaller mezzanine. I do go back to, you know, comments here, again, by experts and by other folks who have been involved, that if we don't make the best possible product, how are we going to attract those acts and those, you know, classes, the, they have the performances, have a Lansing Symphony Orchestra come in and, and do some of their performances, all this information we've received. If we don't have the best possible product, who are we going to attract, and can we, in fact, operate in the black? That being said, last Monday, we did pass a resolution stating that we, as a council, will not agree to subsidize this event center if it is not successful, and we will encourage the sale if we believe it is going to be a burden on taxpayers. I agree with that statement. I support that resolution. So with the additional information I've received over this past week, taking constituent contact into, into consideration, those folks, again, who are experts in this field, you know, I, I am being open to this, and I am going to support the Brownfield amendment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Pallavani Glu. Do we have any additional comments from, I just don't want a back and forth, mayor. Do we have any additional, Vice President Hussein?
Yeah, just real quick, and I, it sounds like everybody kind of knows where they're at on this, but I just, you know, I just want to make sure that we're, I had a lot of conversations with a lot of you. You know, obviously, through this process, folks referenced, you know, Grand Rapids and Ann Arbor, and Cincinnati, and Columbus, and Madison, and Indianapolis, and, and one of the things that they were absolutely right on when they, when they referenced those cities is that they demonstrate, you know, talk about projects like this, sometimes even manufacturing vibrancy in a downtown area. They talk about Kurds, they talk about, you know, the audacity too, right, in terms of their city believing that they actually deserve that, taking shots, things of that. of that nature. And frankly, I don't think that's, this is really any of that. I think this is common sense. This is simply, you're talking about leveraging $3.4 million over the duration of this plan to, to leverage, or I should say, to capture another $8.9 million. So this is, again, not really courage, in my opinion. It's not really taking a shot, in my opinion. This is truly common sense. When you talk about the, the significance of the economic impact downtown alone over the duration of the plan, when you look at jobs created, when you look at adjacent property values, the increase to those property values, when you talk about additional jobs downtown, when you talk about the income taxes that are associated with those jobs, I can, I can just about promise that we're going to, in turn, in terms of the city's coffers, you know, pull back that $3.4 million. But again, without this, we do not capture that $8.9 million. So I've heard a lot of arguments up here about general fund and protecting the general fund, particularly for lower and middle-income people, and that's exactly what I think we're doing here. Thank you.
All right, appreciate the comments. Do we have any additional comments on, from council? Seeing none, looks like Mayor Shore may have had some.
Yeah, I just wanted to correct a few things. I, I don't know where the $3 million number came from, from MSU FCU. They gave $1 million towards the project. There is no increase. So I'm not sure where that came from. I think maybe a member of the audience said it and it got into the dialogue. Also, we do have the bid. The bids are in, but the firms haven't been selected yet, so we do know the bids are, are within, within the budget. I don't understand the two-thirds revenue loss. I'm not sure what that means, so let's please chat afterwards, if that's okay, Councilwoman. And then, yeah, so I was just going to indicate that in terms of structures, once the foundations are poured, we know what we have, but I think Councilwoman Pelavonaglu addressed that. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. So we do have a motion on the floor. Do we have any additional comments? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please state by saying nay.
Nay.
Nay. So it looks like we have 5-3 motion passes.
Okay. Then we are to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. That's the yellow sheet in the back. If you wish to address city council and have not already signed in, we'll give you about another one minute to sign in. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure, I would move that all items to be considered as read in full, and appropriate referrals be made by you, President Garza.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any questions, comments, seeing none? All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
Items from the city clerk, minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on file.
And three items, determinations of the elected officers' compensation commission.
Those will be placed on file.
Troy County Regional Planning Commission financial statements.
Development and planning.
From the mayor, the fiscal year 2425 budget.
Committee of the whole.
Act One revised purchase agreement, Masonic Temple.
Committee of the whole.
Special assessment, lumber and commons, trash and grass abatement, two items on that.
City operations.
Communications and petitions, claim appeal for $375 in trash fees at 10, at 1110 bench.
City operations.
Affidavit of disclosure, Jeremy Rugenstein, Lansing Police Department.
Ethics board.
Communication from Sheila Contreras opposing the Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard proposed realignment.
Place on file.
And a communication from Toby Powell about Lansing Street conditions.
They'll all should be placed on file.
Remarks by council members.
Any additional remarks? Councilwoman Spatterford.
I just wanted to let anyone know who's paying attention. The committee on Ways and Means has been canceled for this week due to lack of referrals.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Spatterford. Any additional comments? Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. I just wanted to take this opportunity now that it has passed. I'm not the person that wants to dwell. We've passed this brownfield, so now I want to see the best version of this for our city because I don't want to see our city fail. You know, again, my opposition was looking out for the taxpayers. We have made a decision up here, and, you know, I'm ready to move forward, not dwell on it, and let's build a hell of a performing arts center, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Cost.
We are to remarks by the mayor.
Mayor Shore?
Sorry, what was that?
Remarks by the mayor.
Yes, sorry, Mr. President. Yes, I, I did want to give everyone a heads up that we have, in hearing last Monday from several council members about more time for city hall, but it wasn't a hard no, it was just more time, we have sent back the, the resolution for city hall, the amended resolution with the, the $3.5 million that was taken out, the substitute. We are going to be as transparent as, as possible. We have a website going up, which will have all the information that, that we have done our best to provide. So all the bids, all of the, all the comparisons with Pete Kramer has put together as our owner's rep. We're going to add the, the eight questions from Councilmember Brown that he sent on Saturday, which, again, Mr. Kramer is, is on a cruise and he's back Wednesday night, so we will have that information to you probably by Friday or Monday, probably more likely Monday. We will have that information, we will email it out to everybody here, and then put it on the website so the citizens can see it. It's lansingmi.gov/cityhall. So they'll have that. There was one other thing. Oh, there's going to be a, Preservation Lansing is going to do a walkthrough of the building. I believe it's Wednesday from 11 to 2. So that way, citizens can come in and Preservation Lansing can show off the building. So there's a lot going on. I just want to make sure that you know, we, we sent it back so that you can have it. We put the purchase agreement in. There were questions about where is the proposal, the purchase agreement is in with it. And again, all the bids will be put online. So we are going to do our best to provide all the information publicly to the citizens, to you, answer the questions that were raised, and then it's, it's on your, your timeline. I will say that I, I hear you on wanting more time, but it has been brought to me two things. One, the more time, the more costs could go up. And two, we are aggressively pushing for more money from the legislature, and I know, I got calls from a few legislators who were watching. They want to know, you know, is this money going to be spent? How is it going to be spent? And as we push for more money for things like Logan Square, for things like, some things in Old Town, for a variety of other things, they're keeping an eye. So we're going to be as transparent as we can. We're going to provide all the information we can. The resolution is, is back at council for your consideration as you are already, and we're always happy to, to take questions, answer the questions, and then put it up on that website so that our constituents know what, what the answers are. So thank you, everyone, for, for your, your hard work and due diligence, and thank you for everything with the ovation. I agree with Councilmember Cost. We, we all move forward together and, and we're going to make the best possible building, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just take a moment, a point of privilege. I'm reading off the, the wrong agenda that we didn't print, that we printed out previously. So items number 11, 12, and 13, I would like to refer those back to committee of the whole, not placed on file.
With that, we are to public comment on city government-related matters. Speakers have up to three minutes. I do want to acknowledge a written communication from the Granger Company, signed by Gary Granger, and I'm going to guess it's related to our first speaker, Jason Alton Granger, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Councilmembers, thank you for taking my time. Jason Granger from Granger Group. Just want to say thank you for all the things you guys are doing. It was great public comment tonight, all talking about the life and vitality of Lansing and the goal and the dream to be able to make that vision happen. As you know, our family's been involved in the Granger, I'm sorry, in the greater Lansing area for a number of decades. In fact, you could date it back to the last century. A lot of other families have been involved as well. And one of the things that our family has tried to do is to bring together those families similar to what we see in Grand Rapids. Our headquarters in Grand Rapids, it is in Grand Rapids. What they've done to bring together members of the community, large, you know, families that have continued to reinvest in the greater Grand Rapids area, we'd like to see the same thing happen here in the city of Lansing because it is, it's our capital, something to be proud of. One of the difficulties that gets always involved in that is the politics of things, the glad-handing and the things that don't necessarily make the city better and make it more difficult to get things done. You guys are well aware of the RFP process for the city hall. That, that's a project that's been talked about for well over a decade. And we have been involved, wanting to see something happen on a piece of property that we happen to own. It's been in our family for 30 years. Problem with that is, nothing has been able to get done because we can't do it without the participation and the active involvement of the city and the state to do something great for the doorstep to Michigan Avenue and our state capitol. We've worked with the city, with the mayor's office and his previous administration and administrations before that. Our goal is that we can see and start to recharge Michigan Avenue because it truly is the doorstep to our great capitol. We submitted an RFP process. We're disappointed in the way that was handled. We don't think it was a public process in, in, in the standard of care and in good faith. One of the things that we want to see happen in downtown Lansing is a completely collaborative effort that affects the community in such a way that isn't just about the here and now. As you could, if, if you, if you look at the way the families here that have invested in the greater Lansing area, they've been turned off. I can say that for a fact. People have been turned off because they have a sense of being slapped in the face at continued, ongoing disregard for the effort that goes in to a lot of different areas that is well beyond real estate.
Thank you.
Well beyond development and buildings. We intend to be able to work with the city of Lansing. I appreciate my time. It's our goal to make sure that Lansing becomes great again and a great place to live, a great place for people to work.
Thank you.
Buy jobs. Thank you.
Next, we have Loretta Stanaway, followed by David Bradbury.
First, I want to thank the four of you who voted to deny the proposal to purchase the Masonic Temple. Second, I want to encourage you to not give in to pressure to immediately reconsider that decision. There are several things I think should happen before a new vote is taken on repairing or replacing city hall. Number one, there should be a current and independent written assessment of what it would cost to do the following things to the existing city hall. A, renovate only the floors needed for the anticipated use by the remaining entities once the courts, jail, and police relocate, leaving additional renovation to be done in phases as needed and as affordable. B, renovate floors needed to bring as many city entities as feasible into city hall. C, renovate for option A and the creation of two to three floors of leasable or saleable penthouse suites to include floors of the LPD facility for dedicated amenities and to include dedicated underground parking spaces. Two, a new RFP should go out, opening bidding for a replacement city hall to all interested parties, and to require the proposal include an option to build at the new South Washington Public Safety Campus where we already own the property, and a city hall facility could be built as an extension of the planned facility or a freestanding but adjacent facility next to the public safety campus. Three, there should be recognition that creating penthouse suites with their affiliated dedicated spaces, dedicated parking, and concierge services is transformational. Nothing else like that exists in the city. Four, there should be recognition that it is folly to buy a building bigger than we need and then try to rent out the excess space, becoming the landlord that the mayor indicated he did not want to become in city hall if we did penthouse suites. And as for the ovation, a final comment there. Architects continually and constantly build on expandable foundations, knowing that at some point, additional stages can or will be built. It is certainly not something that can't happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is David Bradbury, followed by Tricia Washburn.
Thank you, council, for listening. I'm a resident of 1233 Lathrop. I also own a parcel on Allen Street right behind my house. Most of you got a packet. I thought I printed out enough for everybody with the, first, a letter from the planning and development zoning, saying that I had to remove a fence that I had around that and also remove my boat and get rid of a couple of my dogs. Now, I've had this property for four years. I have had no complaints on dogs. I've got the packet, has letters in it from my neighbors. It also, I also, see, no one told me when I put this fence up that I was, you know, in violation of anything. And on top of that, you guys raised my taxes. So, you know, that's kind of, uh, given me the right to do that. You've made me pay more for this. In the process, I was going to go get a building to put up there to cover my boat and my trailers, and I was denied because they tried to add the buildings I have on my Lathrop property, said my footage was already over, I couldn't build a building on my, and Allen Street property. They butt right up to the back. I opened it up, they both, my dogs run back and forth between both properties. Now, nobody has a problem with my property. I keep it clean, I keep it neat. Right now, there is a couple trailers on it, and my, my son's, he's going to be having, he's moving into his house at the end of this month, and he'll be removing those. But my boat stays neat, it's covered, it's clean. I keep the, the property mowed properly, trimmed. My fences are always up kept, making, and the sidewalk's always cleared in the wintertime. In fact, I clear everybody's street, sidewalk on the, both streets, Lathrop and Allen Street with my plow. And most of the part, I also plow the streets because I, street plows don't come down there to plow our streets. So I get this, I've never had a problem. There's no issues with anybody around me with what I've done. All of a sudden, I get a letter saying I have to remove my boat, my trailers, I gotta get rid of two of my dogs. To me, I would just like to ask the city council to maybe put a variance in so I can at least keep my dogs and keep my fence and my boat on my property so I don't have to go take it to a storage unit to pay more money somewhere else where I can keep it on my property for free. Thanks, that's all I have.
Thank you. Next is Tricia Washburn, followed by Alexis Jones.
I'm Tricia Washburn, engagement specialist with Nation Outside. Nation Outside is a statewide grassroots and advocacy organization entirely led by the justice impacted and the formerly incarcerated. Our mission is to drive policy and practice innovation that builds transformative systems to support for justice impacted families and communities. And tonight, I am speaking on a resolution to declare April of 2024 as Second Chance Month in the city of Lansing. Whereas over 4 million people in Michigan have a criminal record or some kind of arrest record, and as a result, face barriers to employment, food, and shelter, and Black and Latino people are arrested, convicted, and incarcerated in numbers disproportionate to their representation in the population as a whole, and whereas redemption and rehabilitation are core to our beliefs and commitment to one another, and whereas second chances and opportunities to rebuild one's life after an arrest or incarceration are pivotable to not only individuals, but also to strong and healthy communities in the city of Lansing, and whereas the ability of people with records to achieve good outcomes and successfully reintegrate into their communities is challenged by housing barriers and contributes to higher levels of recidivism, broken families, and unsafe communities, and whereas research demonstrates that removing barriers and increasing access to stable housing and meaningful employment is linked to decreased crime and improved public safety, and whereas the city of Lansing believes a conviction should not create a barrier to safe housing nor employment, and seeks to assist the rehabilitation of people with records and ensure healthier, safer communities, and whereas states and cities across the country have adopted policies to remove unfair barriers to employment and housing for people with records, and now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Lansing, that the city of Lansing declares April of 2024 to be a Second Chance Month, and be it further resolved that the city of Lansing shall encourage and support state legislation that would eliminate housing barriers for people with records. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is- Thank you. Next is Alexis Jones, followed by Nick Zandi.
Good evening, council men and women, Mayor. I'm just up here to thank the mayor and also Greg for meeting with me concerning their roadside memorials. Uh, they, we met Friday. The mayor, uh, met with me through representation to, um, consider ordinance which they are working on. And I'm here to just thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you doing that. This is a great city. I know that a lot of you may not know, it's a lot of headquarters here in the city limits, such as Paramount Coffee. Their headquarters is here in Lansing. You get your beaners, you go to those beaners restaurants. Paramount Coffee just around the corner is the headquarters. You got Neogen. A lot of innovation comes from them. Headquarters here in Lansing. You got Elderly Instruments in Old Town. Headquarters here in Lansing. And the mayor is concerned about the makeup and the manicure of the city. It's a, I can go on and on. But we get visitors that come visit this city, busloads from all over the world, come visit this city. Yeah, guys may not know this, but they come through this city. And the mayor is concerned about the makeup and cosmetics of the city. And I thank you for just, I'm just up here just thanking you for the meeting that we had on Friday. And thank you so much, Mayor. And hopefully, you know, I have a business, we come to you, we've been planners, um, that I can, I'm asking, I'm putting my log in the fire. Maybe I can work on this ordinance with the mayor office and with my business, of course. So, I'm just up here just to say thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nick Zandi.
The lottery also is headquarters here in Lansing, and a lot of you play the lottery. GTAC is headquarters here in Lansing. All those lottery tickets that you play, all those scratchies come out of Lansing. It's a great city.
Nick Zandi, and then Kerry Kemp.
So, first off, I want to thank you for voting, thank the city council for voting no on item eight. That is, I mean, I thought it was bad enough that you were selling a freaking city property, but to a private firm, but doing so in an extremely shady way in, for an apartment complex so that, from what I've heard, some of their other properties have been just, from what I've heard from Mr. Cost, lackluster to say the least, considering the leak that's been going on there. But I also, I want to speak right now on specifically the city attorney because the city attorney has, is officially, uh, retiring, and I can see the new guy there probably going to a point. I'll make my opinion on the city attorney's office quick. Um, or at least I'll try to. The thing is about my opinion on the city attorney's office is why is it appointed by the mayor? It's just, all that does is give the mayor much more power over other city, city departments like that. And the thing is about a city attorney is they should be able to make decisions on their own regardless of what the, us, what the mayor says about them. And that's why I believe that the city attorney should, that as a candidate for the charter commission, I think that the city attorney should be an elected position rather than an appointed position. Our state's attorney general, as much as I have problems with her due to the whole Palestine thing, um, is at least, is elected, not appointed, and they can basically make decisions on their own. And whenever they have to deal with lawsuits, they can easily just say, hey, I'm not entirely a personal lawyer for the governor. I'm basically making decisions on my own, and I'm only accountable to the people of the state of Michigan, and I am not worried about whatever the governor has to say about me. And I think, and just look at the city clerk's office right now, it's elected. And the city clerk gets to make decisions on their own without worrying about what the mayor has to say, only worrying about whether or not the people will reelect them or not, which our currently city clerk is currently that popular, so he's pretty much guaranteed win reelection every time. And to say that, I think that the city attorney's office should be treated in a similar vein. Through all, the city clerk's office is treated similarly to how the secretary of state's office is. And it's elected, and it's also elected, so we should do the same for the attorney. And briefly, I just want to say that I oppose any removal of a boulevard on any part of Martin Luther King Junior is just bad for walkers and will just probably make traffic even worse than it already is. That's all I need to say.
Thank you. Next, we have Kerry Kemp, followed by Lissa.
Good evening. Hi, I stand with Nation Outside, um, alongside as a woman of, uh, white supremacy. Um, I hope that I do not subpoena or speak over those of many tongues and many diversity. Um, but I speak to you because I saw that you have thirteen percent in reservation. Um, and I'm happy to see that you're speaking on housing and firefighting, housing and arborist, uh, many things that we need. Um, however, I am speaking for Monica Kennedy, a woman, um, a Black woman who froze to death last, uh, winter, uh, with her children, three and five, um, outside. Um, her voice is not heard today because she cannot be heard, and neither can her children. Um, I'm speaking for the eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven homeless in two thousand and twenty-three. I'm speaking for the six hundred, uh, homes red-tat, um, just last year, and it has now doubled. Um, and I've, I'm so proud that many of my council, uh, men and women are now speaking on that and that you are heard and, um, because you've seen that, um, you know, that many of the buildings are running down and that many of these people are living in such deplorable conditions. But I think you're missing the bullseye. Um, we are concerned about business and building up, and we're concerned about, um, hitting things. But, um, you also mentioned about application fees. Um, and must I remind you, an application fee is four, uh, forty dollars to a hundred dollars per application fee. So, we are talking about, um, families that can't afford a car, families that can't afford to go to the movies, families that can't afford to feed their families. Um, and you are wanting to put application fees for low income. Now, this doesn't even include the incarcerated or people getting out of jail, which is about sixty-one thousand in just the state of Michigan. Um, you have to have at least a six hundred and fifty dollar, or a fix, six hundred and fifty credit score to get into any type of apartment. Um, and that doesn't build in jail. Um, so, uh, try being limited income or getting out of jail. Um, and you need to at least get, um, fourteen thousand eight hundred and six, uh, dollars a month for two bed. Um, and the average income for a family of four is nineteen-some-hundred.
Thank you. Uh, our final speaker is Lissa.
Hi. I'm nervous. Let's see. I'm Lissa. I live on Leslie. Oh, first, I'd like to note that the city of Lansing Steel has two huge old trees on it, which I think is noteworthy. I loved them. Um, I love the beautiful old trees that are on Michigan Avenue, and I don't want any more of them to be cut down. Um, I, it sucks, it's making, it, I'm really sad about it. I know that it takes a great deal of time and effort to come up with ideas to improve our city infrastructure, and I wonder why Lansing does cut down so many big old trees that have stood in the same place for decades. They've stood planted by someone before us, a steward of our land who knew the beauty that they would offer as they aged. Someone who perhaps would be thrilled to see them standing tall today diligently shading our sidewalks and offering softness to our eyes after all those years ago when they envisioned the planting of them. I wonder what they would say about this plan of action. Um, I've, I've spoken with many people since last Monday when they first started, stumps were appearing at the end of my street. And the clear consensus is that people feel sad and shocked in my, in my little neighborhood about it. Um, they're, they're friends of ours, these trees. One person asked me, why don't I get to vote on this? I walk these streets and I sit waiting for the bus every day, and I really appreciate the shade, and I feel like I know these trees. We do know them. We feel comfortable turning corners of our city streets and seeing familiar, valuable old friends. It got me thinking about how essential communication is with people who live here regarding such drastic and irreversible changes to our streets, heartbreaking changes. I'm sure you're all doing your best to share your plans with the public and to engage with community input, but in this case, I can clearly feel that many people did not know this was going to happen and are devastated by it. Um, I think that old trees make cities feel better and more cared for and more magical. I've been amazed exploring cities that go to great lengths to protect old spaces, green spaces, and cut into the sidewalks and relay them versus cutting them down and planting new trees. So, I'm here to ask and beg, essentially, I'll do anything I can to help you if necessary. I don't know how I could help, but I'm around, um, to, maybe there's a way we can save, uh, the trees and also have safer bike lanes and sidewalks and keep what's left of our history in that regard. So, uh, please stop the process that has begun of tree removal and take the time to go back and re-envision these plans for the Michigan Avenue. I, I don't know what you call it. Is it the revival or the renewal project or, but it's shocking to my, to my neighborhood. So, so can you do anything about it, or is this, is comment no, no answering, or questions, or, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. No further business. We're adjourned. Thank you.